Good evening. I'd like to welcome all of you to this second session of Plymouth's annual town meeting. It is coming to you live on Monday, April 4th, 2016 at 7:00 PM. We are at Plymouth North High School, which is located on Aubrey Street, and we are in the Center for Performing Arts. And, once again, we welcome Kenneth Tavaris, who will be serving this evening as Chair of the Board of Selectmen. We also welcome Mark Rich, who is in the front row of Coltman and Page, and he'll be serving as Town Council throughout this evening's session. And, once again, John Moody is here as Chair of the Advisory and Finance Committee. You're reminded that Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 71 prohibit the use of any tobacco products within the school buildings, the school facilities, or school grounds by any individual. Our officer on duty this evening is Paul Caraher. There are written materials available at the sign-in table. In particular, I draw your attention to updated copy of our motions, beginning with Article According to our town charter, Chapter 2, Section 5, Subsection 2, the town clerk keeps a record of attendance, and pursuant to the next subsection, a representative of town meeting member who cannot attend a session shall provide written notice to the town clerk. I've been advised that there are some members who have provided written notice. The town clerk prepares the roll in advance of the town meeting, and based on such written notice received from town meeting members, that could affect any oral roll. Any town meeting member who gives notice in advance will not be included in oral roll call. Anyone wishing to inquire as to reasons given for town meeting absence should check with the town clerk. And, further, in addition to the roll, I urge town meeting members to look at your electronic vote when it is scrolled. I had a town meeting member come to my office yesterday and requested that he move to reconsider when we got here this evening. It became apparent that he had failed to vote on the article on which he wished to reconsider. Town Clerk Lawrence Peiser has advised me that we now have a quorum of at least ninety elected town meeting members, and I therefore declare that a quorum being present this Plymouth annual town meeting will come to order at 7:02 PM. Also pursuant to our charter, representative of town meeting member shall notify the town clerk in writing prior to any meeting session as to any articles giving rise to a financial conflict of interest. Once again, we have tellers this evening. They are Jane Bumpus, Jennifer Harris, Thomas Marr, and Pamela Bergardi. We will recess within two hours from the start of this meeting, as provided in our charter. And, we certainly would like to thank the Plymouth Music Association band parents who are providing refreshments this evening. Now that a quorum has been called, a quorum will be presumed throughout this evening's session, and we will reconvene within fifteen minutes following a recess. We'd like to recognize PAC TV, which is cable casting live this evening. In particular, tonight, we have Eric Christensen, Justin Coonan, Jen Davis, and Brooke Hoffman. The setup was David Antoine and Dan Rodriguez, and PAC TV staff in partnership with the staff at Plymouth North High School would like to announce that the technical difficulties that affected Saturday's town meeting coverage have been resolved, and PAC TV is providing a backup technician for this evening's coverage. This facility has been provided by the Plymouth School District, and we'd like to thank the head custodian and the entire staff for setup and cleaning. I'd like to take a moment just to comment on the postponement yesterday. Last year, on April 7th, the Massachusetts Legislature passed a new law which provides for the moderator in consultation with local public safety officials to determine whether or not to recess and continue a town meeting. Yesterday was our first opportunity to rely on the new statute. Some of you may recall in years past when we had a special town meeting solely on the subject of Hollywood East, that particular meeting was postponed or canceled, and the clerk and I had to appear at the venue in order to cancel the meeting. In the future, however, we will do as we did yesterday, and prior to the next town meeting, we will develop a written protocol with the town manager in order to assure that everyone is properly notified. But yesterday at 4:13 PM, after determining with the town that the conditions for travel were not optimal, we did continue this evening. Thank everybody for being here. So, the procedural motion to reconsider is not in order. I therefore will go to Randolph Parker, who moves to change the order of the articles, and he requests that Article 32 be taken out of order and immediately following the Article 16 articles. Randolph Parker, do you care to be heard on your motion to change the order? A motion to change the order requires a two-thirds vote. It is debatable, and, as in past practice, I do take the procedural motions in advance of any substantive motions. Mr. Parker, on your motion to change the order of the articles. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. As kind of one thing leads to the other, if we do not finish tonight, I'm moving Article 32. A number of members will be at the Board of Appeals. I'll be at the Board of Appeals. 16A through H, like Article 32, are also CPC articles. So, I think it makes sense to do 16A through H, move into 32, and then finish with the rest of it. And if some of us miss tomorrow night, that's okay by me. The substance that I'm committed to has been addressed. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Further discussion on the motion to change the order of articles? Hearing none, I'll call for a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries by more than two-thirds. We will now continue with Article 11. Mr. Moody moves Article 11 and moves that the town vote to transfer the sum of $656,280 from the Town Promotion Fund created pursuant to Chapter 4 of the Acts of 1993 for programs and projects to enhance the beautification, recreational resources, public safety, promotional and marketing activities, events, services, and public improvements. This is a majority vote, a roll call. If it is not unanimous, Mr. Moody.
The Advisory and Finance Committee unanimously recommends town meeting approve Article 11. Town meeting approval of this annual article will allow expenditures from the town's promotion fund. The promotion fund created by special legislation is funded with forty-five percent of the receipts from the hotel motel tax and is used to fund special events and celebrations. The Town Promotion Fund also is used to pay a marketing and promotions contract with Destination Plymouth, which provides the town with television and print advertising around the country, maintains a waterfront information booth, and provides access to a Destination Plymouth website.
Board of Selectmen are in support. Further discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries unanimously, and we will now move on to Article 12. Mr. Moody moves the town vote to accept a sum of money the state declares as available funds as the state's share of the cost of work under General Laws, Chapter 90. Said funds to be expended under the supervision of the town manager. It's a majority vote. Mr. Moody.
The Advisory and Finance Committee unanimously recommends town meeting approve Article 12. Positive action on this article will enable the town to accept state highway or Chapter 90 funds for repairs and construction of public roads. While the actual amount of Chapter 90 funds for fiscal year 17 was not known at this time, Plymouth did receive more than $1.5 million for fiscal year 16. The town expects a similar amount in fiscal year 17 unless there is a change in policy and/or the state's financial health.
Majority vote. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Article 13 is withdrawn. We therefore move to Article 14, where Mr. Moody moves that $200,000 is appropriate for the purpose of financing the following water pollution abatement facility projects. And you have the text in your packet of materials. This will be a two-thirds vote, a roll call if it's not unanimous. Mr. Moody.
The Advisory and Finance Committee unanimously recommends town meeting approve Article 14. Town meeting approval of this article will authorize the town to borrow $200,000 from the Massachusetts Water Pollution Abatement Trust for use in making loans to local homeowners for septic system repair and/or replacement, or for sewer hookups. The septic system must be failed in order to qualify. The state loans the funds to Plymouth at 2% interest. Homeowners are eligible for loans of up to $15,000 from the town at 5% interest. The additional interest offsets the program administration costs. Loans are recorded as liens on the property and are billed by the assessor's office as a tax bill attachment, which ensures repayment of the loan.
Board of Selectmen are in support. Discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Article 15, we have no motion. Hearing no motion, I declare no action. Article 16, we have a number of articles under 16. I will put into the record one of the articles, the first one, 16A. Mr. Moody moves the vote taken under 16A of the 2014 Spring Annual Town Meeting, as previously amended twice, is hereby amended by reducing the now $4 million borrowing authorization approved thereunder for the restoration of the 1820 courthouse by the sum of $500,000, and further to transfer $500,000 for the fiscal year 2017 Community Preservation Act revenues for purposes of future restoration of said 1820 courthouse, including construction, demolition, renovation, operation, and related costs. Majority vote. A roll call if it's not unanimous. Mr. Moody.
The Advisory and Finance Committee unanimously recommends town meeting approve Article 16A. Town meeting approval of this article will authorize $500,000 reduction to the remaining $4 million borrowing authorization for the restoration of the 1820 courthouse, and authorize the Community Preservation Committee to set aside $500,000 of the fiscal year 17 CPA revenue for 1820 courthouse restoration expenses. This will enable the Community Preservation Committee to reduce borrowing for the project.
Board of Selectmen are in support. William Kohan is the Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. Welcome, Mr. Kohan.
Good evening. Bill Kohan with the Community Preservation Committee. The 16A, B, and C are borrowing authorizations that town meeting gave the Community Preservation Committee. We're coming back to you. We have not borrowed on 16A, B, or C. We've been coming back and reducing that borrowing authorization, anticipating the initial bills coming in so we can go at available funds rather than go to any short-term borrowing, saving money. And, again, that's what I'll say about 16A, B, and C, so we can quickly move through that, just to give you some understanding of what's being presented tonight. We are not asking to raise and appropriate any funds. The funds for everything that we're going to do today are in counts for housing, historical, and open space. I want to make that clear. There'll be no borrowing on these articles, and so...
Mr. Moderator, you can continue.
Yes. Done?
With your presentation?
I'm done on 16A.
Okay. Further discussion on 16A? If not, we'll call for a vote. It's a majority. A roll call if it's not unanimous. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. We will now move to 16B. Mr. Moody moves the vote taken under Article 16A of the 2015 Fall Annual Town Meeting is hereby amended by reducing the amount of $2,500,000 borrowing authorization approved thereunder for the historical preservation, restoration, rehabilitation of the Sims House by the sum of $500,000, and further to transfer $500,000 from fiscal year 2017 Community Preservation Act. You have the text. Majority and a roll call, Mr. Moody.
The Advisory and Finance Committee unanimously recommends town meeting approve Article 16B. Town meeting approval of this article, like Article 16A, will authorize a $500,000 reduction to the $2,500,000 borrowing authorization for the restoration of the Sims House, and authorize the Community Preservation Committee to set aside $500,000 of fiscal year 17 CPA revenue for Sims House restoration expenses.
Further discussion?
That suffices as our presentation. Thank you.
If not, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. I will call the vote one more time, and otherwise it'll be a roll call vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. We will have a roll call vote. The light will go on when it's time to vote. We are voting on Article 16B. It's the first roll call vote of the evening, and you can now start to vote. And you will see that we have people voting. We have 135 town meeting members, and as long as the light is on, we are voting. When the light goes off, we will be through with the vote. The vote has been completed. Ninety-nine having voted in favor, four in opposition, and abstentions zero. And as we scroll through, again, please note whether or not your vote is properly reported, and if for some reason there is an inconsistency, you can announce it to us in open session and then work with our vendor in order to correct it. We're showing the precincts, all fifteen of them. We're through Precinct 12, and now we're continuing with Precincts 13, 14, and 15. And that completes the voting on this particular article. Article 16C. Mr. Moody moves that the vote taken under Article 16B of the 2015 Spring Annual Town Meeting is hereby amended by reducing the $2 million borrowing authorization approved thereunder for the restoration and rehabilitation of Stevens Field by the sum of $200,000, and further to transfer $200,000 from the fiscal year 2017 Community Preservation Act revenues for the purposes of future restoration of said Stevens Field, including restoration, construction, rehabilitation, renovation, and related costs. It's a majority vote, a roll call if it is not unanimous. Mr. Moody.
The Advisory and Finance Committee unanimously recommends town meeting approve Article 16C. The town meeting approval of this article will authorize a $200,000 reduction to the $2 million borrowing authorization for the renovation, preservation, and rehabilitation of Stevens Field, and authorize the Community Preservation Committee to set aside $200,000 of fiscal year 17 CPA revenue for the Stevens Field project expenses.
Further discussion?
That concludes our presentation.
If not, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Article 16D. Mr. Moody moves the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to inquire by purchase for open space and recreational use purposes pursuant to the community preservation program and to accept the deed to the town of Plymouth of land located off of Black Cat Road. You have the text. It is a majority vote. It is a roll call if it is not unanimous. Mr. Moody.
The Advisory and Finance Committee unanimously recommends town meeting approve Article 16D. Town meeting approval of this article will appropriate $46,000 from the Community Preservation Fund to purchase approximately 14.6 acres of land off Black Cat Road for open space purposes. The acquisition of this parcel to be held under the care, custody, and control of the Conservation Commission is intended to protect the headwaters of Town Brook. Water from this property runs to Billington Sea and then into Town Brook.
Further discussion? Mr. Kohan.
Thank you. Due to saving time on 16A, B, and C, I do want to stop and just take note of a book that we passed out on Saturday afternoon. It's a book, it's a record of the actions of town meeting over the last fourteen years pertaining to the Community Preservation Act. The book is pretty user-friendly. You open it up, you can go to a town meeting a year, special, annual, spring, fall, and you can see exactly what this body did in relationship to those funds. There's also pictures that show different projects that we worked on. Every year, in the spring, we will update it. It will be on the town website, so people can go and look at it, and we will have hard copies available. For the first thirty days, we would like this legislative body to review this book and this material. If you see any changes or recommendations, send them forward. We'll make those. This is just a draft version of the document so far, so we wanted you to look at it first before we released it to the public.
Okay. Article 16D. The Community Preservation Committee is recommending to town meeting the acquisition of fourteen acres more or less off Black Cat Road. If you look at your briefing book, the CPC Green Briefing Book, you'll see on page four the language of the article, and you'll see on page five a map of the property. I can show you here that approximately... You can see right here, outlined in red, you can see the property that we're looking at. The property is about fourteen acres more or less. It sits next to a parcel of land that the Community Preservation recommended to town meeting last year and a half ago. That was a 52-acre parcel. It surrounds a water resource. This parcel that we're looking at now is about fourteen acres. There is a bog there. That bog has a spring. That spring goes into Billington Sea. Obviously, Billington Sea goes into our Town Brook, and our Town Brook goes into our harbor. There's been a lot of efforts over the years to preserve and restore our Town Brook and the water resources working into our harbor, so this would add to that level of preservation to the ecological resource of our Town Brook and Billington Sea. So, it's a recommendation for $46,000. The land is unbuildable. It has a small bog on it. That's where the spring is, and that's our interest in this property. It's a water protection acquisition. Thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. We'll now move to the next Article 16E. Mr. Moody moves the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by purchase for open space and recreational use purposes pursuant to the community preservation program and to accept the deed to the town of Plymouth of land located off of Hedges Pond Road. You have the text. It's a majority and a roll call, Mr. Moody.
The Advisory and Finance Committee, on a vote of eight to three, recommends town meeting approve Article 16E. Town meeting approval of this article will appropriate $45,000 from the Community Preservation Fund to purchase approximately 7.8 acres of land located off Hedges Pond Road for open space and recreational purposes. The acquisition of this parcel to be held under the care, custody, and control of the Conservation Commission is intended to square off existing town-owned land at Hedges Pond Recreational Area and Preserve. The land contains trails that are currently used by visitors to the recreational area and is recognized as an area of critical environmental concern by the Commonwealth's Executive Office of Environmental Affairs.
Kohan.
Thank you. Community Preservation Committee is recommending 16E to town meeting. It's an acquisition of approximately seven acres more or less for $45,000. Again, this parcel is not buildable. The parcel does add to a number of goals that the town has set out in a series of reports and studies, and that is, when we have an opportunity to enhance a recreational space, we should try to do that. This is an attempt to make Hedges Pond preserve a recreational area that much better. At the same time, in the low right-hand corner of this preserve, there are trails that convene at this location. Actually, you can see a neighborhood to the south that people make their way into this preserve through many different paths and trails. So, we'd like to control that corner of the property so people can access the property from different entrances. The trail that you can see here at that portion of the property, they're quite divine. They're very nice. They may wander through the woods there, and they're quite established. They're... A lot of people use them. At one point in time, when this area was a campground, there were golf carts that went around the trails. So, the trails are very nice. They're very easy and flat and level and an attractive place to walk. You can see here a close-up of the property. It hangs down here a little. Obviously, Elmer Raymond Ballfield is to the south. A number of acquisitions that you have seen in the past through the Community Preservation Act has tried to connect different conservation parcels of land, different recreational spaces. Our hope is to achieve this in this area someday, but it would be something that we would bring to town meeting at a later date. Right now, what we're recommending is that we acquire this parcel to enhance the current recreational amenities of Hedges Pond with the future hope that this parcel will lead to connecting other parcels. Thank you.
Further discussion, 16E. Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. We move to 16F. Mr. Moody moves the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by purchase for open space and recreational use purposes pursuant to the community preservation program and to accept the deed to the town of Plymouth of land located off of Fisherman's Lane, Ship Pond Marsh, Surfside, and Bayside Beaches in the town of Plymouth, comprised of 9.98 acres more or less, shown on Assessors Map 50 as Lot 3. Said land to be held under the care, custody, and control of the Conservation Commission to transfer $140,000 for the acquisition and other costs associated therewith from the fiscal year 2017 Community Preservation Fund, estimated annual revenue, said total sum which shall be reduced by the amount of any grants received by the town pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 44B, Section 11, or General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7, or any other enabling authority, and to further authorize the Board of Selectmen to grant a conservation restriction in said property in accordance with General Laws, Chapter 44B, Section 12, meeting the requirements of General Laws, Chapter 184, Sections 31 to 33. It's a majority vote, a roll call if it's not unanimous. Mr. Moody.
The Advisory and Finance Committee, on a vote of seven to three with one abstention, recommends town meeting approve Article 16F. Town meeting approval of this article will appropriate $140,000 from the Community Preservation Fund to purchase approximately 9.98 acres of land located off Fisherman's Lane for open space and recreational purposes. The acquisition of this parcel to be held under the care, custody, and control of the Conservation Commission is intended to preserve 1,200 feet of frontage on Ship Pond Marsh and 1,000 feet of frontage on Cape Cod Bay. The parcel consists of a barrier beach between Cape Cod Bay and Ship Pond and will provide opportunities for hike-in shore recreation from Fisherman's Lane, Bayberry Road, and Douglas Avenue. Several members of the committee raised reservations about this acquisition based on accessibility to the general public, neighborhood concern about increased traffic, and the potential for water inundation.
Mr. Kohan.
Thank you. The Community Preservation Committee is recommending the acquisition of this parcel. The parcel is located... It's located in southern Plymouth. You head out of Manhamet, and you head into the village of Vallesville, just south of Manhamet, before you get to Ellisville Harbor, and you'll see that the property is located right here. It's uniquely positioned between a coastal plain pond there, right on the bay, a very rare amenity. We have one at Center Hill, but this is kind of interesting to have a pond so close to the Atlantic Ocean. There's a barrier beach between this pond and Cape Cod Bay. The rationale for this acquisition is for the protection of this ecological resource. The Community Preservation Committee feels it's important that when you find a water resource where the town currently owns property on this pond... This pond is fed by a river in which the river, the brook, runs through town-owned property. So, if you look here, you can see that the town has property located in this area, and this is where the water is coming into Ship Pond, and there are town-owned properties on Ship Pond. To better manage Ship Pond as an environmental resource, controlling that side of the pond is a benefit to the town. Right now, the town of Plymouth has a easement to go down to this pond. There is a culvert. That culvert needs to be kept clear, so that as the pond rises, there's somewhere where this water can go and exit the pond, because if the pond rises and the culvert gets closed, you have a flooding condition with the ponds and properties and septic systems around the pond. So, the town has this easement to go down, to let the water out of the pond, and the town is doing that. And by owning the property fee simple, we give the town better management, control of the easement, and approaching the easement and removing the debris that might be clogging it. You can see here, this is standing... You can see here, this is standing in the northern part of Ship Pond, looking past Ship Pond over towards Cape Cod Bay and the barrier beach. The property is accessible. This is from the south. This is looking from the southern beach north. The southern end, the beach is not what you would see at Plymouth Beach, where you have a very sandy beach. It's a rough New England-y, cobble-y beach. It's a barrier beach, very similar to parts of Ellisville in Center Hill and southern Plymouth. You do come across this condition. And this is an entrance from the southern portion of the property. This is the entrance to the northern line of the property. And to get to this location, you would go through the Surfside residential neighborhood. It's a private neighborhood, but the town does own land in the Surfside development. By owning that land, the town has the rights and privileges to these ways. This is where the town accessed... This is where the town comes onto the property to handle the culvert and its obligation to address that responsibility. So the town comes in from this location to get to the culvert, to clean it out. Now, the Community Preservation Committee, after presenting this article to various caucuses and speaking with the owner of that... Excuse me, speaking with the abutter to the property, they were concerned about this being an access point for car vehicles, vehicle traffic. And after speaking with the department, the police department, the fire department, and the Office of Marine Environmental Affairs, and the town manager, we have agreed that we would not make this a vehicle entrance to the property, that at this end, where you come into Surfside and make your way down Pond Circle Drive and onto Fisherman's Lane, there would be gated and there would be no parking. People could enter... People could access the property from this location via a pedestrian way. The property is important to note, it's important as an environmental resource. One of the paramount reasons of acquiring this property is to preserve that environmental resource at this location and give the town better access to its easement, that it being an amenity where people can access it by foot. Neighborhoods to the north and the south and the west, if people want to walk down to this property, they can and go out to the beach. They can do that right now because the property is held in Chapter sixty-one A. Chapter sixty-one B, excuse me, is a policy with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. If you own land and you agree to put it in a certain chapter status, you get a tax break, but you have to accommodate the community in some way. This one is kept in Chapter sixty-one B, which is recreational, that allows passive access to the property. Right now, people can go there as residents of the town of Plymouth, but that right is not guaranteed forever because at some point, this owner or some other owner could take it out of Chapter sixty-one, sixty-one B status and deny access to people to go onto the property to get down to the water. So this article has two efforts. One, to preserve it environmentally, and two, guarantee future access to Cape Cod Bay in this part of Plymouth. It is a waterfront pocket park. It is meant to open up that capability that is diminishing all along our waterfront. As waterfront property gets more and more expensive, it's more and more difficult to find opportunities to allow people to get down to the water. And this is an attempt to do it. It's unbuildable. It was appraised by a licensed appraiser. The appraiser came in and determined it to be a hundred and six... a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Right now, the town of Plymouth has it assessed in its records as forty thousand. That's not accurate to its true assessed value because in the town's records, they have to reduce the value of the property by seventy-five percent under Chapter sixty-one A and tax the owner on the remaining value, which is forty thousand dollars. But the real... If they weren't in Chapter sixty-one, they would be assessed for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So we have an assessment, but when the Community Preservation Committee works with a seller, we don't negotiate from the assessed value as much as we go off of appraisal. So there was an appraisal done to this property. The appraisal determined it to be worth a hundred and forty thousand dollars. And this area here, you're looking at Fisherman's Lane. Fisherman's Lane is a road that runs right through the middle of the property. This is at Low Tide. There's a sandbar there. You can see here, Fisherman's Lane, at one time, came out from Center Hill Road and State Road and came down here. In this location, Fisherman's Lane has been encroached on by some properties that were built in the eighties and nineties. The road that goes out here is unkept. It is a right-of-way, but it's unkept at this point, washed out at different points. Where Fisherman's Lane came in and hit Shoreline Drive, that has been altered, that Fisherman's Lane now goes along Pond View Circle right down here. These are the properties over here that the town acquired currently. Our attempts in this location to assist the town addressing its culvert in this area would be to only look at the footprint of Fisherman's Lane at this location, where the culvert is, and improve it. That's where it would be gated. There'd be no parking signs. The town could go down with its key and go onto the property and deal with the culvert, and then do a three-point turn and leave the property. There is a right-of-way, it's approximately eight feet. Any alterations of that or improvement of that right-of-way is going to require us to engage the Conservation Commission. Often, when the Community Preservation Committee acquires a property like that, and we're working on these entrance points, we go through that process due to the fact that the land is conservation. This is again, you can see where Fisherman's Lane goes right through the middle of the property. Again, we're not recommending improving that road just over here where the culvert This is an old photo of it, years ago. Aerial view. From this one, it does show you the brook that feeds into this pond. This is the town-owned conservation land to the south that feeds the water into this Ship Pond. And again, there is Ship Pond, kind of a close-up of it, again, showing where the water resource is fed in the existing... These are parcels the town of Plymouth currently owns on Ship Pond, Pond Circle Road. And this is a view of it. Again, it is a rough New England coastal property. It is a breathtaking property to stand on and look out at the bay. And again, these unique opportunities, having access to get down to the water in your neighborhood. I'm lucky enough to live downtown Plymouth. I can walk to my waterfront. I can walk to Stevens Field. And anytime we can create an opportunity in a part of Plymouth that doesn't have that right guaranteed is a good thing. And that concludes my presentation.
Frank Collins, followed by Randolph Parker.
May I use the elector?
You may, Mr. Collins.
I have to put down my stone.
Thank you. We're debating Article sixteen F. Thank you.
Frank Collins, Precinct Six. My daughter, Megan Dempster, couldn't be here today, but she reveals very strongly about this article, and she's strong enough to write something, which I'm going to read into the record. Thank you for allowing me a few minutes to discuss why I am opposed to the CPC's recommendation at town meeting to purchase a lot of land located on Fisherman's Lane. First and foremost, please let it be said, I am an avid proponent of the CPA tax and all of CPC's recommendations to date. Unfortunately, I feel this particular recommendation has not been thoroughly vetted and is not in the best interest of the town. This particular piece of property does not possess the qualities necessary to make it a desirable acquisition for the people of Plymouth. The access point in and out of the location is a dirt road, which permits the passing of only one vehicle at a time with several blind, narrow corners. If you were to encounter another vehicle while either entering or exiting the proposed lot, you would need to pull off the road to allow the other vehicle to pass. The neighborhood is residential with homes sitting very close to the road, making the addition of vehicular traffic very undesirable. But most importantly, I believe we need to consider the financial impact of this acquisition. Throughout this town meeting, we have heard representatives and residents alike speak of the impact of our decisions on the town's tax base and the need for town meeting to be more responsible while considering budgeting and acquisitions. Here we have a piece of property which is neither desirable as a beach destination, far too rocky with uneven topography, but is also unnecessary as an entry point for the maintenance of the adjacent pond, given the town already owns several lots which allow access to the culvert to ensure proper drainage and flow from the ocean to the pond and vice versa. This particular lot also has several issues concerning the accuracy of what is actually being purchased. The town's own property assessment data website lists the property as five point five five nine acres. The deed of Plymouth Registry of Deeds lists the property as plus or minus six acres, not the ten acres as described. And the acquisition proposed in this Article sixteen lists the property at ten-plus acres, not counting the acreage added at Low Tide. This parcel of land was purchased on September twenty-ninth, two thousand and ten for the sum of fifty thousand dollars. This particular lot is unbuildable and was sold as such. Since that date of sale, the landowners have petitioned for and have been granted a sixty-one B tax exemption on the property and therefore entitled to pay taxes only on the exempted value of forty thousand twenty dollars. This restriction and subsequent reduction of property tax allows for the passive recreational use of the property by the public. It has been confirmed by several of the surrounding neighbors that access has not been granted, but actually restricted to the point neighborhood residents no longer attempt to access the property. Now, the CPC is recommending the purchasing of this piece of property for a hundred and eighty-eight... a hundred and forty-eight thousand. This property is neither a beach destination nor is it a necessity for maintenance of the pond. The independent appraisal of this piece of land came in at a hundred and forty-eight thousand, the asking price by the seller. This is not a buildable lot nor is frequented by many in the neighborhood to the ongoing concerns regarding its accessibility. My recommendation at town meeting would be to vote no on this article, pass on the purchase of the land, and follow up with the town on the missed opportunities regarding proper taxation of this lot. Additionally, I feel a refusal to grant sixty-one B exemption until proof of passive recreational use of this property is proven would be prudent. I'm almost done. If an exemption is to be granted, access must be allowed to the public, and the property should be taxed at the standard property rate determined by the assessed value. Either way, the town wins by allowing access to the property without allocating the hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars of CP funds if the sixty-one B exemption is granted and enforced. Are the town garners the appropriate taxes on a parcel valued at nearly a hundred and fifty thousand? If it is determined access is actually denied and the sixty-one B exemption is refused. Thank you again for considering my concerns. I ask that you pass on this proposal and vote no. Megan Collins, Dempster. I'm Frank Collins. I'm familiar with the property. I was delivering Lob's Debate to the Richardsons that owned the property in the early sixties. They had a railway there where they used to launch their boats. I went down there Sunday just to refresh my memory in terms of what the property was like.
Thirty seconds.
This is one of the smaller grains of sand that's on the piece of property. It is unwalkable for somebody my age. If I was ten or twelve, I could probably skip across it, but we have the same benefit that we would have if the CPC bought it and the town owned it. If they want to sell it, town has first refusal.
Randolph Parker, followed by Gerald Cirico.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Moderator? One's order?
Thank you.
Thank you. That takes precedence over other speakers. It's a motion to close debate. I will now ask as to how many people wish to be recognized as possible future speakers? Thank you. And we will now proceed to vote on the motion to close debate. It is a two-thirds vote. It is not debatable. I will now call for a voice vote on the motion to close debate. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those say no.
No.
Does not carry. Mr. Parker, followed by Gerald Cirico.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Collins was kind enough to give me a souvenir. So watch my pants. I would disclose that I've been involved with this property, one of the abutters and the sellers, so I will have no substantive comment. I will abstain from the vote to avoid any conflict of interest or appearance thereof. However, I do have a procedural question, Mr. Trifladdy. The original motions, sixteen F, was two-thirds a roll call. The motion's just distributed. It's a majority, roll call. I don't see any change in the language. What happened?
It's the majority.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
You're welcome. Gerald Cirico, followed by James Concanon. Mr. Cirico.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. First of all, I hope that Mr. Parker or Mr. Collins don't decide to throw those stones. I have a question for Mr. Kohen. This sixty-one A, B, C, or D, or whatever it is, that's a tax deduction on your tax?
Correct.
Okay. Should the person... The person has the right to take that out of that status?
Correct.
The owner? If they do, is there a penalty to them from the tax people?
Well, they can... It's a program that you have to opt into every year, and you can opt out of it after a certain amount of time. You can decide not to reapply. After five years passes, the rollbacks that you would have owed on that would be applied to any attempt to sell the property. So if you took it out of Chapter sixty-one, the town would lose its first right of refusal for the first five years, and then eventually, if the property did sell, the town wouldn't have a first right of refusal, but they would, up until that five-year period of time, have a rollback to pay on it.
Thank you.
Next, James Concanon. James Concanon.
Jim Concanon, Precinct Twelve. In full disclosure, I live nowhere near this property. I'm not familiar with it. I really appreciate the CPC's further explanation and the slideshow of this, but I've had several impassioned email letters from local residents worrying about what would happen considering the original proposition that, as I understood it, about having a parking area there, having it difficult to patrol by police, having property values in trouble there because of those types of issues in other local regions. So I would either like CPC Bill or Chief Bo Terry to just speak to that in terms of patrolling it to quell the, you know, the fears of the local residents, that this could become a destination for people to hang out and trash the area versus public access, which it seems like is a wonderful thing to do. Thank you.
You want Kien to respond?
The current access capability of the site under Chapter sixty-one allows people to go down there to the property. You could theoretically drive down there. You could walk down there. You could go on the property. Mr. Collins indicated that Megan had indicated that the current owners are not giving the access that is... that would be defined under Chapter sixty-one. Well, that's one of the reasons that we feel it's important to acquire the property. So if the town owns the land, the access issues are now a moot point. People can come onto the property and leave the property. That's what we're trying to establish at this location and appreciate and respect the private abutters to this property so that when you come down Clear Pond Circle and you get down to this property and you get to the abutter who's to the north of the property, you're not using their driveway to turn around. You're going onto Fisherman's Lane, the improved location. There's a hammerhead there that would be constructed so you could do a three-point turn and leave, but this is not for visiting public. This would only be for the town to go down. There'd be a gate. There'd be a key. You would go in, and the town would be able to service its culvert. We are not proposing at this time to create a parking area where people can come and go. There'll be signs that say no parking. There will be a gate there. I had a chance to talk to the chief of police in the fire department, in Marine Environmental Affairs, and the town managers. They have agreed to allow us to address this location this way by just making it a pedestrian entrance to avoid any, you know, distraction to the private abutters in this isolated northern part of the property. northern part of the property.
Okay. I very much appreciate the expanded explanation from what I understood from the article and from what I understood from the caucus, and I just wanted to express concerns of some local residents. And if the chief agrees with what you said, then I've done my job. Thank you.
Paul Francis, followed by Richard Neely.
Paul Francis, Precinct 6. I too went down and visited the property, and as you know, I'm an ardent fan of the CPC. However, there's one way in and no way out for this property. I don't think it's the best bang for the buck. I probably will support it, but until I had a conversation with Bill the other day, I heard nothing about a gate on here, and then you assured me that there was going to be a gate because if there are parking spaces or whatever, this is an absolute disaster looking for a place to happen. So what assurances do we have on this gate?
Well, under the conservation restriction that would be drafted for the property, you can put in there allowable usages. There are different things that you can draft into the document. Gating this northern end of Fisherman's Lane could be included. It is the intent not to create a situation in an isolated area that draws attention that can lead to behavior that's a distraction to the abutters. But at the same time, there are other means of pedestrian entrance to this location from the south, and the CPC has tried to do its best to accommodate the abutter to the north who had these concerns, and we hope that we'd support the article.
That has to be a concern. And by the way, I didn't take a rock from the beach.
Richard Neely.
Need a permit to do that.
I wish I had written the letter of the first objection that would appear here, but the purchase of this land has absolutely no benefits to the town. In terms of access, because there is no parking in the area, it's disingenuous to say that we have full access. I drove down there, and merely the act of stopping my car on the road aroused the natives. I was told I could not park anywhere near that area. So access is in the eye of how close can you get? Secondly, the lot at the moment is unbuildable, whether it's under a conservative conservation status or not, which leads me to believe, how could anybody estimate the value of that at anything other than the $40,000 presently assessed? The town will lose tax revenue. That land is taxed under this conservation deal, and it pays $651 annually. The lot does nothing to protect existing water sources. There are no endangered species except tax dollars. The cost is way over the assessed value, and the town retains the right of first refusal should another buyer choose to ante up the enormous prices that we are being told. For these reasons, I urge town meeting to reject this proposal.
Betsy Hall. We're debating Article 16F annual town meeting. Betsy Hall on Article 16F.
Betsy Hall, Precinct 12. I also drove down in the snowstorm yesterday, I mean, yeah, yesterday morning, and looked at this property, and it reminded me of a story, and I'm going to tell you the story, but I want to assure you it does have to do with this article. My friend and I were once kayaking down on Cape Cod, and we wanted to have lunch, and we took our kayaks, it was pretty much low tide, but not 100%, up onto the shore just to stop and have a sandwich, and the landowner came screaming down at us, "Get off my beach", blah, 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 blah. I think the endangered species here is public access to any or all opportunities that we have. Now, I noticed that there were many, many houses in this area, both to the north and to the south. Mr. Cohen has assured us this is going to be a pedestrian access. Many of the people who live in this area have no access through this area to use this beach. It's a lovely beach. Person could put in a kayak there. We have a master plan that says we have six major goals, and one of those is to improve the quality of life, and that's to expand coastal and pond access. And I do think that this would improve the quality of life for the people who live in that neighborhood, and I don't think that the loss of revenue that we have in taxes will begin to match the amount of enjoyment that people could have if they want to go down just from these neighborhoods. But there are many, many houses. I don't know if it's 100 or 200, but there were a lot of houses there of kids who can go down and play. They can pick up rocks. They can have fun there. They can access this pond. I don't think it's very much money to get 1,000 feet of frontage on the ocean and allow the people who live in that neighborhood. I don't think that I'm going to be driving over from West Pond, Long Pond, Lowet Road. I don't think many of you will be, but for the people who live in that neighborhood, I urge you to vote for the Article 16F. Thank you.
Everett Malaguti, followed by Alan Costello. We're debating Article 16F.
Everett Malaguti, Precinct 1. I've been on the fence for a while on this article because I agree that the town needs to increase its access to the waterfront, which is very lacking for a town in shoreline of our size, and I respect a lot of the commenters on speaking to that that support this article. But with this purchase, if there is no surety to actually have a parking apparatus somewhere near or on this property, it does not grant access to everyone, which basically is what the CPA and the open space is supposed to do. Granted, I'm in North Plymouth. I may not go down there, but there's always the opportunity that I can go down there, but I need to be able to find access to park a car. If I do not have that access, how is it access to the general public if that is excluded to just some of the few that are around that have pedestrian mobility within there? So I urge town meeting to cautiously vote no on this article just to make sure that access is granted to everyone and not just a few. Thank you.
Alan Costello.
Good evening. Alan Costello, Precinct 10. I too visited the property. It's a million-dollar view. There's no question about it. It's a beautiful spot. However, I have a couple of reasons where I will object to this article. First one, I'd like someone to speak to the notion of liability. To Mr. Collins's point, it's a very dangerous area to walk. It's one I had difficulty with. There's debris all over the place, most of it washed in from the ocean, but now all of that debris will become the liability of the town. But the biggest in, the biggest reason I have an objection to this is it came known to us at the Precinct 10 caucus on the 31st of March that one of the principals in the trust that owns the property is an elected official here in town, indeed a town meeting member. And I was going to ask Mr. Cohen to explain to the whole body why that didn't show up in any of the paperwork or in his presentation, even up to including this evening.
William Cohen, Chair of Community Preservation Committee.
The Community Preservation Committee operates from the position of an application process, and we have been advised by council that everyone that applies for CPC funding for an acquisition is treated equally regardless of who they are. We have, in the past, entertained applications from elected officials in the town of Plymouth who have purchased property from them. We are currently entertaining applications where there are noted individuals who have an interest in that real estate. In the last 14 years, we have entered into discussions with potential sellers who are known in our community or have some official capacity. But what we stand behind is our application process. It requires us to go through an appraisal process where an independent appraisal is done of the property, and we operate from that appraisal information. The other thing that's important to note is that if you have a community preservation act in your community and you're trying to entertain the best opportunities to the town, you do not want to say to a potential owner of a property, you might not want to approach the town because of who you are, and that opportunity is diminished. So we have to be very careful to make sure that our application that is available to everybody, everybody's treated equally, and no one shies away from taking an application and entertaining a discussion with the community preservation committee on a possible acquisition.
Mr. Costello.
All right. So with that, I guess I would ask that the body turns down this proposal based on the fact that I feel that we're getting this information sort of late, if at all, and I think it has to be properly vetted. Thank you very much.
Paul Churchill. We're debating Article 16F. Mr. Churchill.
Hi. I am Paul Churchill, born and raised in Plymouth, Mass. I have nothing but the best intentions for the town of Plymouth. The Article 16F land you are about to vote on is at my front door. I ask you to vote no on Article 16F for three main reasons. Reason one, this is the wrong location. The road in is a private one-lane dirt drive. When you meet traffic, you have to back all the way out. The neighborhood cannot support any more traffic. The road is eroding into the ocean. More traffic will only accelerate the process. The brochure that Mr. Cohen showed you will have this property listed and encourage people to drive down to see the property they have purchased. I don't blame them. This is their right. This is the tax money that bought it. A remote area like this provides a place for drug use and other bad activities. I spoke with Mr. Clement of 130 Center Hill Road next to the Center Hill CPC property. He cleans it daily in the summertime. He states, "A hotel room would be the only way to describe the site Friday and Saturday nights." After speaking with him, I drove to the Center Hill Preserve property and observed numerous condoms and liquor bottles on the ground. Fence or no fence, this will happen. People will merely park at the fence. I do not want my 10-year and 12-year-old daughters looking out their front door and observing how a condom ends up on the ground. Police cannot patrol this site like they can a two-lane road as in Center Hill. Reason number two, there is no benefit to the town owning this land. It is 16B land. The town always has the first right of refusal. The assessor's card is clearly marked unbuildable. Anyone can walk down and enjoy the property and have for decades. This is at no cost to the town. The next left off State Road going south brings you to the Center Hill Preserve, less than a two-minute drive. I timed it on Friday. Less than another two minutes south is the Ellis Harbor State Park. I don't know why we'd spend this money now. Lastly, this looks like a sweetheart deal. The land was bought in late 2010 for $50,000 by a current town meeting member. Now that our house is up for sale, they are selling it to the town for $140,000. That does not include the $10,000 that the town has to pay for a stewardship fund, I believe it is, to watch the land, and another somewhere around $10,000 that is owing back taxes that we're giving up. They are unloading their tax burden on the town. Lost my spot. This is a frivolous amount. If you pass this, you are showing no fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayer. Thank you very much for your time.
Thomas White.
Good evening. My name is Tom White. I reside at 2 Center Hill Road, and I'm speaking on behalf of some of the neighbors abutting the southern end of the Fisherman's Lane Cod Path. My wife and I own a majority of the southern portion of the eight-foot path known as Fisherman's Lane, which is a deeded access path. Let me begin by saying I fully appreciate the CPC as well as the Conservation Board. I believe they have the best of intentions regarding our unique and wonderful town. I value and appreciate the historic and environmental advantages our town offers to its residents, but I respectfully ask town meeting members to oppose the Article 16F at this time. I ask that the town allow our close-knit neighborhood some time to assess the impact a town purchase would have on our community. Having briefly read the appraisal, I already noticed an error regarding the Cod Path width directly behind my home as stating the path is 10 feet, but in actually it's only eight feet. I respectfully ask the town to allow the surrounding abutters and deeded path residents time to work towards a solution that will make the land sellers, the town, and the neighbors happy. More importantly, an association-owned neighborhood property would save the town and its taxpayers tax dollars in terms of policing, cleaning, and maintenance of the property. Thank you for your time.
Virginia Johnson.
Hi. Virginia Johnson, Precinct 7. And as you probably know, Precinct 7 runs along Manamette Bluff, and in the years that my husband and I have lived there and raised our children there, I have seen many of the beaches on Manamette Bluff closed off from the public. So I think in Plymouth, we have the idea that we have this endless supply of beachfront property for the public to enjoy, and there's also sort of an assumption that people will allow you to go down their stairs on Manamette Bluff or through the paths further south, but that's not true. As Mrs. Hall mentioned, someone screamed at her when all she did was eat a sandwich on the beach. So beachfront property in Plymouth is disappearing and disappearing very rapidly. Some of it is informal by neighbors cutting off areas, and some of it is just people screaming at other people to get off the beach, and some of it is no parking, and much of their concerns are valid, but I strongly support buying the town-owning beachfront property. It's the town that's the boss of that property once they own it. Thank you.
Craig Brenner, continuing to debate Article 16F.
Craig Brenner, Precinct 14. Mr. Cohen, could you inform the group regarding the ability for the town to limit access to the space if we buy it? In other words, there's a lot of concern in the room regarding unwanted traffic in the space. Is it possible for us to limit that, or once the town owns it, is that, do we have to allow access to all? That's question number one. Question number two is, I haven't heard a lot of discussion regarding the environment in that space in terms of birds and, you know, protecting that space could potentially improve the value of the homes in the area, and I'd be interested in knowing your thoughts on that. Thank you.
William Cohen is the Chair of Community Preservation Committee. Mr. Cohen.
Well, it's often noted that if your property is in close proximity to conservation land, it is a benefit. If you go on multiple listings in real estate, you'll see that you'll have to check that box as a desirable element to the property, but obviously, when you buy land that is in make-up conservation, the abutting properties do experience a value to that. Now, in terms of access, and it's important to note that sometimes the Community Preservation Act acquires property, and we may not build a trailhead. We may build it, we may buy it for certain reasons. We may say, "We're buying this land to protect the water supply." Like a Black Cat Road, we're not planning to build trails or a parking trailhead. At that location, there will be a gate as you come towards the property so that people can't go on it because it's been purchased for this reason. You can go on it passive recreationally. You can walk on it if you want, but we're not deliberately building infrastructure like we did at Isle River or Center Hill. Isle River and Center Hill are not gated. They're open, they're open till dawn to dusk, and they're not gated. We are proposing to the northern boundary of this property where the abutter has his concerns to gate it where there are signs that say no parking. So if someone goes down Pond View Circle, they have to turn around and leave because there's nowhere to park and there's a gate in front of them. Right now, you can go down there now because it's under Chapter 61B, but as it was indicated earlier, that's not forever. Someone could take it out of 61B, and now you wouldn't have the access. It's important to note on the appraisal of this property, it was praised based on other properties that are not buildable that have a recreational amenity. In Plymouth, people buy property that is unbuildable, that has a recreational amenity, whether it's on Saquish or whether it's on Great Herring Pond or somewhere else. There are examples of people buying property that have an unbuildable capability to recreate on it, and those parcels are limiting opportunities for public access to the water.
Okay, so can I rephrase? Okay, so can I rephrase? Is it possible that acquiring this land could decrease the current traffic to the area?
Well, now that it was gated with the appropriate signage, it would decrease the traffic. You wouldn't be promoting it as a parking area. Right now, there is no gate. People can go down there with a car, but the only way in and out is disturbing the abutters. By cleaning up the property, properly gating it, putting up the signage, that is going to deter traffic to the location, other than the town to go down and do its culvert work, or the residents to go to their homes.
Thank you.
Ron O'Reilly. We're debating Article 16F. Mr. O'Reilly.
Thank you. Couple of questions for Bill. We're talking about a gate and access. We keep referring to the north side. Is the south side still intended to have a small little cul-de-sac type with maybe a couple parking spots?
In the south here is Center Hill Road. In this area here, it is, it is, we could discuss that, but it would require permitting and hearings with the conservation. It's in a pristine state. We wouldn't want to disturb that. We'd have to look and entertain that. If we're not going to do something in the north and make it a pedestrian access point, we would enter into considering other locations and other opportunities to build a carport in this area. Center Hill and Ellisville Harbor are in the vicinity of this property, but there are no sidewalks from this neighborhood to those locations. But we would continue to look at an opportunity to allow a car to get down on the property and get down on the beach. But the primary reason for this acquisition is to allow a pedestrian entrance, pedestrian entrance and access to the ocean for a neighborhood or a series of neighborhoods securing access to the water.
To be in favor of this, I'd like to see that there are a couple parking spots down there for town to be able to pull in. And there isn't much enjoyable land there, as everybody has been saying. The north side, you cannot walk. The south side, there is a little bit of sand, and I would like to see town residents be able to use it. Don't put 10, 20 parking spots there, but again, someone can pull in and sit and catch a sunrise or something like that or whatever.
Just to be clear, we wouldn't do it in the north. If we were to do anything, we'd entertain it in the southern portion of the property.
Yes, correct, which is where the only amount of sand on that beach is. Now, is the pond, is that owned by the town?
No, the pond is not owned by the town. The town does own a parcel here on the pond, two parcels here, and they own, it's this larger parcel here where the brook runs in and feeds the pond. So this would be proposed. The town would then acquire this half of the pond. Up here is the culvert.
And we maintain the culvert presently?
We have an easement to maintain the culvert.
You talk about taking blockages out so it can drain. Being on the beach, what if a storm comes in and wipes this culvert out and the pond drains? Is it our responsibility to rebuild this culvert for the neighbors, for the people that don't want traffic down there? Is that to give them their pond back?
The culvert has been there for many, many, many years, and it is a, before that culvert, before the barrier beach gives way, as you can see, the barrier beach sits back from Surfside and from the southern side, so it's well-protected, and it does experience overwash onto the beach, but it is not, at this point, threatened to be washed away and destroyed.
Not the whole length of it, but we've seen it on Taylor Ave wash across and Plymouth Beach wash across the road. So I could see that that culvert being washed out with a good storm.
The town will always be required, under its easement, to free that debris. Whether we own it or not, we're still going to have this relationship with the culvert in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Jennifer Churchill.
Hi, Jennifer Churchill. I'm a resident on--
Speak into the microphone, please.
Sorry, Jennifer Churchill. I'm a resident on Fisherman's Lane. I have a couple of questions. Is the road already not town-maintained? Isn't that road in already town-owned and maintained?
The road in from Pond View Circle?
Pond View Circle, yes.
Pond View Circle is part of original subdivision plan by Agnes Trast, which is the Surfside neighborhood. That land there and those rides are private. But because, because the town of Plymouth owns some of the land on that plan in that subdivision, now the town of Plymouth has, right now, people have the legal right to go down Pond View Circle Road to Fisherman's Lane. So people do have the right now to come in because of that ownership.
And the town has the right to take care of that culvert?
And they, and, yeah, on top of that right, there's the original right. The town has the right to go down to clear out the culvert.
Yes. And there were rocks put up by the current owner of that parcel, correct?
Correct.
That blocked some residents and the town.
Correct.
So, okay.
So obviously, if the town did acquire the property, that blockage, you know, would be removed.
Even though it was put in conservation, they still blocked it?
Well, when, it's in conservation because of its Chapter 61B status, but they still own the property fee simple and--
So that was kind of like putting a gate up?
Well, no, they weren't blocking onto the, you know, onto the Fisherman's Lane access. It was more down along the frontage of the property, but--
Okay. And the people, the woman that spoke about the people screaming at her for parking her kayaks was probably the present owner, who is the one that was preventing most of the neighbors from accessing the property. The present owners that tend to make three times the amount that they paid for it, and it's assessed at?
When, when someone buys land, and this land was last purchased under a private sale, it didn't go on MLS, it didn't have a realtor, it didn't go to the highest, you know, when you do a private sale, you--
I'm a realtor, I'm a realtor.
Right. So you understand that when you do a private sale, that, that amount of money is, is not reflective--
But usually, the assessed value has some bearing on the appraised value.
Kohan. We're going to finish this. She has--
Okay, I apologize. I just had a, just a question about the, the access. There's definitely private access. There's a right-of-way on the southern end that the right-of-way has been there that'll stay there. So there's definitely access, and there's a town-maintained road that's accessible into the culvert. The only prevention of the accessibility was the present owner. So that's, you know, I'm just disputing--
Pond View Circle is a privately-owned road, and again--
But town-maintained.
Yeah, well, they do come down and plow it, and they, and they do address issues around it, but it's, it's still privately owned.
But you have access and a right-of-way to the culvert?
Correct.
Yes.
But that can go away because the owner could take it out of Chapter 61B and deny access only for the culvert. They could not deny access, but they could deny pedestrians that are currently--
But there's a pedestrian access on the other side.
But that would be denied also.
All right, we're gonna, through the moderator, we're gonna, if you're gonna do a colloquy, we're gonna have questions and answers.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Landers.
Motion to close debate. It's not debatable. We'll now ask anyone to rise who still wishes to be heard. Thank you. And at this time, I'll call for the vote. It'll be a voice vote. It's a two-thirds vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All say no.
No.
Motion carries by two-thirds. We will now have a vote on Article 16F. It is a majority vote, and a roll call, if it is not unanimous. I will first take a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All say no.
No.
Motion does not carry. We do, are gonna have a roll call vote since it is not unanimous. This will be a roll call on Article 16F. If you can get your handsets ready, and when the light goes on, you can begin to vote now. This is Plymouth Annual Town Meeting. It's coming to you live from Plymouth North High School. We are located on Aubrey Street. We are in the Center for Performing Arts. This is the annual town meeting. We are voting on Article 16F, and thereafter, we will continue with Article 16G. We have a few seconds to vote, and the voting has been completed. Twenty-nine in favor, 69 in opposition, six abstentions. The motion does not carry. Article 16G. Mr. Moody moves the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by purchase for open space and recreational use purposes pursuant to the Community Preservation Act, and to accept the deed to the pound of Plymouth of land located off of Little Sandy Pond Road. You have the text. This is also a majority vote. It's a roll call if it's not unanimous. Mr. Moody?
The Advisory and Finance Committee unanimously recommends town meeting approve Article 16G. Town meeting approval of this article will appropriate $175,000 from the Community Preservation Fund to purchase approximately 26 acres of land located off Little Sandy Pond Road and Livingston Drive for open space and recreational purposes. The acquisition of this parcel to be held under the care, custody, and control of the Conservation Commission is intended to provide passive recreational walking trails. The land borders town-owned open space property to the north, which includes the well that provides residential water for the ponds of Plymouth.
Further discussion. Mr. Kohan, Community Preservation Committee.
The Community Preservation Committee is recommending the acquisition of 26 acres more or less in southern Plymouth. To get here, you would go to Exit 2. You would travel down Long Pond Road to Carter's Bridge. You'd follow Carter's Bridge over to Little Sandy Pond Road. It would take you past Camp Massasoit, and the property is right here. As you can see, there's been pretty much intense residential development in this area. This is a remaining pristine pine barren forest in this location. To the north, it does appear that there are no homes, but this is a 29, currently a 29-house subdivision. In this location directly above, that's the water supply for the ponds of Plymouth. There's some tax titled town-owned land here. Through this area where there has been a subdivision that has been approved and is under construction, there are trail capabilities through this area to a preserve, Pickrell Pond Preserve to the north, which abuts the Little Herring Pond property the Community Preservation Committee recommended last fall. This property here is in a corridor of great interest to the Community Preservation Committee and the environmental community. You have a series of water resources, Little Herring Pond. You have Triangle Pond. You have Island Pond. You have Great Herring Pond. You have Hedges Pond. You have quite a few ponds and water resources in this area. It's an area of critical environmental concern. It's a, it's an area of natural heritage, which is a permitting process. It doesn't stop residential development in the area. It's, it's a permitting process where, where open space has to be achieved in the subdivision. In this area here, to the south, there's Camp Massasoit, a thousand acres below that, the Atlantic Golf Course. This property here could possibly play an active role in connecting other properties for a passive networking of trails in the southern part of Plymouth. The Community Preservation Committee had it appraised. This property is buildable. It came in at 29, excuse me, $290,000. The Community Preservation Committee worked with the owners of the property. They agreed to a bargain sale on the property, and they have offered the property at $175,000 to the town of Plymouth with a bargain sale. You may have an appraisal that says it's 290. If you sell it at $175,000, the difference you can pick up in the form of tax credits. So the owners have agreed to sell the property less than what it appraised. There is a rollback of $40,000. Even with the rollback and the acquisition cost, the total cost to the town is less than the appraised value. The Community Preservation Committee is recommending the acquisition of this property. Thank you.
Further discussion under Article 16G. Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All say no. Motion carries unanimously. Article 16H. Mr. Moody moves the town vote to appropriate from fiscal year 2017 Community Preservation Fund estimated annual revenues the sum of $110,217 to meet the administrative expenses and all of the necessary and proper expenses of the Community Preservation Committee for fiscal year 2017, and further to reserve for future appropriation from the fiscal year 2017 Community Preservation Fund, estimated annual revenues the sum of $275,543 for the acquisition, creation, and preservation of open space use. $275,543 for acquisition, preservation, restoration, rehabilitation of historic resources. $275,543 for the acquisition, creation, preservation, and support of community housing, and further to transfer from the fiscal year 2017 Community Preservation Fund estimated annual revenues the sum of, and this number is different than what you have in your packet, the sum of $352,583 to a fiscal 2017 budgeted reserve. It's a majority vote. A roll call if it's not unanimous. Mr. Moody?
The Advisory and Finance Committee unanimously recommends town meeting approve Article 16H. Town meeting approval of this article will allow the Community Preservation Committee to set aside for later spending 10% of the annual revenues of the Community Preservation Fund for each of the following: open space, historic resources, and community housing. Also, $110,217 or 4% of the annual revenues will be set aside for the purpose of funding administrative and operational expenses. The balance of the fiscal year 17 CPA revenue not used for Articles 16A through 16G, which is estimated now at $352,583 since Article 16F did not pass, will be held as a reserve balance which can be used for any CPA purpose at future town meetings.
Further discussion. Mr. Kohan, any comments?
Yes, on, our last remaining article is our administrative article. We put this through every spring town meeting. It sets up our accounts for housing, historical and open space. We also have an account for administrative activities. We could request up to 4% on the admin side, a 5%, but we don't. We ask for 4%. What we don't use in our admin account reverts back to the fund. Each year, town meeting has to reallocate the administrative side. But we are required to set up these accounts for housing, historical, and open space. As the monies come in, they have to be equally divided between the accounts. We use our admin funds strategically to bring forth to you recommendations that have received the level of due diligence that is necessary in terms of appraisals. We're not required to do appraisals, but we know the town meeting wants to see appraisals, and we go through that process. It strengthens our application process, and we utilize the admin fund for those appraisals. We also utilize the admin fund for our legal due diligence, excuse me, due diligence preparing for town meeting and then after-town meeting. In opportunities, we use the CPC fund to address trailheads, making sure there's proper fencing and signage and gates where necessary so that people can visit properties and walk on them safely. So access is important to the committee, and we use our admin fund strategically so that we can provide that to the residents of Plymouth. Thank you very much.
Further discussion on Article 16H. Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All say no. I'll call for the vote one more time. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All say no.
No.
We'll now have a roll call vote. It is not unanimous. We are voting now on Article 16H. You'll have an opportunity to vote. After, I'm going to show the vote on 16F. But now we're doing 16H. You can vote with your handsets. We have 135 town meeting members. This is Plymouth Annual Town Meeting. We are completing the Articles 16, Articles A through H. We have four seconds in which to vote. Then we will show the tabulated vote and the totals. It does pass. 101 in favor, 1 opposition, 0 abstentions. We will now scroll through the precincts. You'll see precincts 1, 2, and 3 are shown. A green is a yes, a white is no action or absence, failure to vote. We have precincts 3, 4, 4, 5, and 6. Again, a red will be a no vote, a yellow would be an abstention. Precincts 7, 8, and 9, as we scroll through the list of town meeting members who have voted on this particular article. Precincts 10, 11, and 12 are shown on the screen. And we finish with precincts 13, 14, and 15, and that completes Article 16H. I'm now going to ask UTI Options Technologies if you could go to 16F and show town meeting members their vote on 16F. We voted this earlier, and we are now going to show town meeting members the vote that was tabulated by Options Technologies. This is on 16F. You'll see, we had a vote, and we're going to come up with the totals on that. We're currently waiting, and thereafter, we're going to be going to Article 32 next. It'll be the next article. And while we're waiting for that, I will at least read the motion into the record. Randolph Parker-- Randolph Parker, Precinct Seven, moves the town vote to rescind its acceptance of the Community Preservation Act, General Laws, Chapter forty-four B, Sections three through seven inclusive, which was authorized by town meeting on October twenty-fifth, two thousand and one, and by ballot question on May eleventh, two thousand and two. It is a majority vote, and if we need additional time to do sixteen F, we can come back to that. Do you need additional time? Hearing a yes. So we'll come back to that after this. So, Mr. Parker, on your motion, Article thirty-two, do you care to be heard?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I have found myself between a rock, a rock, and a rock on this article. I have known Stephen Stryer for over forty years. I've known Bill Cohen for thirty-five. I am, without a doubt, a very strong supporter of the CPA and the CPC. They have been so good to the town and Manhamet and me. When Stephen walked into my office with a petition for this, I signed it because I believe in his sincere conviction and his belief that this ought to be debated and talked about. I believe in his ability to petition the Lord with prayer, so to speak. So it brings us here. We've had the debate. You've all met Stephen at the caucuses. You've all met Bill Kohan at the caucuses. And I commend the both of them for the civility with which they have conducted themselves. And it's a comfort to know that we are friends first, and politics doesn't really matter when it gets down to the bottom line. The language of this article is that the town vote to rescind its acceptance of the Community Preservation Act, which was authorized by town meeting. All of the articles in our booklets, all of the motions, we are the town. I have been under what I guess I would call a preconceived notion that this really ought to go to the voters. But that's not the way the question is framed. If it had a comma and said, "Subject to ratification by referendum," I think you'd get one answer from me. I think the way it's written, you may get another. But I'm going to keep an open mind. I'm going to listen to the debate and decide how to vote because right now, I'm not quite sure. The benefits that I have seen from this, and Stephen has chosen, I think, more than an uphill battle. With this town meeting, he may as well be climbing a mountain. But we've gotten some great CPC books, very detailed, a lot of background information mailed to us. Another CPC book with every place now that we know of that we can visit. And I think Stephen had something to do with that. CPC, the members thereof, make a great effort. And times change, and money's becoming skinnier. And things are being scrutinized more closely. And this is a good thing, to have this debate and take a look at it. And I thank Stephen and Bill Kohan, who doesn't have a lot of fun when this stuff happens, for the tolerance and for their efforts. Lastly, looking back to Article sixteen F in an ancillary manner, I think it would be a good idea. I don't know which department to approach, but when it comes to convey-
Mr. Parker, are you relating your comments to Article thirty-two, or are you going back to sixteen F?
No, absolutely. Has everything to do with Article two, thirty-two, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
When it comes to these conveyances under the Community Preservation Act, just as we notify abouters, three hundred feet around, every time there's a planning board hearing, every time there's a Board of Appeals hearing, a hundred foot around for conservation. When it comes to a conveyance under Article thirty-two, the Community Preservation Act, its existence or not, presuming that it survives, we ought to be notifying the neighbors that there's a piece of property coming under town control on the warrant. With that, I will shut up, sit down. Thank you for your time.
Stephen Stryer is the petitioner. We'll now have a petitioner's presentation. This is on Article thirty-two of the annual town meeting warrant. This is coming to you live from Plymouth North High School. We will recess within two hours from the start of the meeting. We are located at Plymouth North High School on Aubrey Street. We are in the Center for Performing Arts. Article thirty-two, Mr. Stryer, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm not much on presentations. I do first want to thank the, I want to thank Bill, and I want to thank the Community Preservation Committee because they do a wonderful job. I just have an issue with the Community Preservation Act, not the Community Preservation Committee. So if you're at your precinct caucus, the Board of Selectmen or Advisory and Finance meetings, when I spoke on this issue, you know why I'm here. The language of Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four B, Section sixteen B is clear. The CPA may only be revoked in the same manner as it was accepted. That means in Plymouth, to effect the repeal of the CPA, permission must be asked and granted by town meeting for this issue to come before the citizens of Plymouth for a vote. If not for this statutory requirement, this matter, like many others, could be brought directly to the people for a referendum, but it can't. So here I am, and I ask you to consider the following. The voters of Plymouth did not elect you to be our benevolent overlords. We did not elect you to protect us from ourselves, and we certainly did not elect you to act in a manner contrary to our rights and privileges as citizens of this town, state, and country. We elected you to represent us, the voters, the citizens, the people of Plymouth. We elected you to act, not only in our stead, but in our interest, with the expectation you put aside your own biases and personal interests in all deliberations and actions before you. So while some of you may believe the CPA is vital to the town of Plymouth, some of you may not. Some of you may feel every piece of open space must be preserved. Others may not. Some of you think more should be spent on affordable housing and historic preservation. Some would disagree. And some of you may believe that the taxpayers of this town are being asked to do too much, pay too much, and should get a break, while some of you think they can and should do more and pay more. And just like you, outside this hall, the citizens of Plymouth have the same mixed feelings about the CPA. Some think it is wonderful and sorely needed. Others, like me, feel differently. The only issue now, the only issue you should be contemplating is whether you, as town meeting members, have an obligation to the people of Plymouth, all the people of Plymouth, to let them have a voice in this matter, to allow them to act in a manner they choose to keep or rescind the CPA based on their conclusions and their desires, to exercise their right to direct the actions of their government through the well-established referendum process. So in closing, and before you vote, I would like you to ask yourself these questions. Am I voting based on my personal feelings about the Community Preservation Act, regardless of how my constituents may feel? Or on the other hand, is my vote based on the fear that the voters, given the option, may vote to repeal the CPA? If you answered yes to either question, I urge you to reconsider your position, and I ask you all to respect the rights of the voters, the people of Plymouth. And I ask you to vote yes on Article thirty-two, so this matter can rightfully be brought before them. Thank you.
John Moody, Chair, Advisory and Finance Committee.
The Advisory and Finance Committee unanimously recommends town meeting not approve Article thirty-two. This article seeks the approval of town meeting to advance a proposal to repeal the Community Preservation Act. Town meeting approval of this article would authorize the placement of a ballot initiative in an upcoming election to repeal Plymouth's acceptance of the Community Preservation Act. The Advisory and Finance Committee fully supports the objectives of the Community Preservation Act and believes it would be imprudent to repeal the acceptance of the act. Residents of Plymouth will continue to pay into the pool of funds distributed to communities under the CPA, but Plymouth will not receive any supplemental state revenue to pursue projects to preserve the community's history, improve its affordable housing inventory, and supplement its substantial open space and recreational resources. The estimated state revenue in fiscal year seventeen totals approximately five-hundred-and-twelve-thousand dollars. That's what you would be giving up.
John Mahoney, behalf of the Board of Selectmen, do you care to be heard?
John Mahoney from the Board of Selectmen. I don't know if Mr. Shirley is here tonight, but he was here the other day, and he referenced the power plant. The power plant came online in seventy-two. Nobody could have foreseen what occurred. You were a small community of eighteen thousand people. You were three-hundred-and-fifty years old. And as you looked up and down the coast, it was Hedge, Cold Spring, Nathaniel Morton, Mount Pleasant, Plymouth Carver High School on Aubrey, and down in Manhamet, you had Manhamet Elementary. Six schools, two fire stations. The plant comes online. Twenty-five years later, you had taken in between five and seven-hundred million dollars from the plant. There was an artificial lowering of taxes. And from my research, I can't find another community in the history of New England that added twelve incremental schools and fire stations in a twenty-five-year period. So essentially, you expanded overnight from twenty thousand people to sixty. You didn't have the correlating recreational facilities that you needed to service those people. You were in a business, you were running a business. In that business, these people want waterfront access. It's one of the things they want, whether it be freshwater or saltwater. I was in Japan on behalf of the community last August. I had a forty-year-old town resident, lifetime town resident, pull me aside or an employee of the school department and ask me if I had ever been to the Hedges Pond Recreational Center. And I answered that I had. This individual, early last year, had stumbled into that facility and was absolutely stunned that a facility of this magnitude existed in the community that he had grown up in and spent all his forty years here. And I will make a baseball analogy that if you needed one of your waterfront beaches, whether it be freshwater or saltwater, to pitch the seventh game of the World Series for you, it's Hedges Pond. And I can tell you that the rest of those are outside on that baseball diamond, struggling to make the staff for Dwayne on the JV squad. Aesthetically, certainly Long Beach, White Horse Beach, Fresh Pond, and Morton Park are all beautiful, but they don't have the functionality that we need to give to the community. And the bar has been set with Hedges Pond. And unfortunately, that facility is five years old in a three-hundred-and-ninety-six-year-old community. So these are the things that we need to do. We have a lot of work to do. When you look at all the land acquisitions from the CPC in the last fourteen years, all of those land purchases, you have not had to build an incremental fire station, elementary school. You haven't lost the ability to construct an industrial park. All you've done is try to build on your inventory of quality waterfront access, among other things, and not permeate every last corner of the community with residential development. We need a balanced approach. You're running a business. As you move forward, this will allow you to have a balanced approach as you approach permeation or build out of the community in the next twenty to thirty years.
Stephen Palmer. We're debating Article thirty-two of the annual town meeting. This is coming to you live from Plymouth North High School. This is a motion from Randolph Parker, Precinct Seven. Mr. Palmer on Article thirty-two. Good evening.
Morning, Mr. Moderator, I mean, good evening. I'm against this article. I remember I first moved to Plymouth, the realtor asked me that I was living on a cul-de-sac. I asked if that was some type of an animal. I hadn't heard that word before. She said, "Where are you from?" I said, "Oh, I'm from the Gate of Heaven, K and Seventh." "Is that New York?" I said, "No, that's God's country." My mother-in-law would come to the ponds of Plymouth a few times a year to see the newborns. She's from Lancaster County, Mennonite Quaker thoughts. We would travel to Walmart because there wasn't a Walmart in her town. Trash would be everywhere, parks, streets. "Steve, Steve, what's going on here, Steve?" "I don't know, Ma." Every time she came, I would pick up the town. Then I became a TMM, and I learned about the CPC. I saw the flags on the Long Pond Road, Hill River, and on the light poles. Saw the grass grown five feet high, trash everywhere, fence broken, rotted out. Figured it had to be done. Then I met Bill, who thanked me for helping the preserve out. That led me to baseball fields, basketball courts, et cetera. I'm happy to help. I tip my hat off to Bill for all the work he has done here. I couldn't think of this town without him. Ah, the Community Preserve Committee.
Community Preservation Committee wishes to be heard. William Kohan is the chair, Community Preservation Committee.
Thank you, Bill Kohan, Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. As you know, I have gone to many of your caucuses over the last fourteen years. I've been briefed. One of the reasons I go to your caucuses and I make those detailed presentations is because as elected officials in a representative form of government, you take on an obligation to do a level of research of material and make decisions as a legislative body. And that was the reason why I came to all those meetings. I presented you that information so you understood how this statute worked as well as the Community Preservation Committee understood. So if someday someone came to the body and said, "We need to put this on the ballot," you could make that decision. Is the Community Preservation Act performing at a level that is acceptable to this body to continue to make decisions? In two thousand and two, we passed it by sixty percent. And since then, we have achieved some progress here in the town of Plymouth when it comes to balancing growth and development. I just want to show you this slide here. It shows the community preservation revenue over the last fourteen years. You can see the state match came in at twenty-one percent. In the first years, in two thousand and two, three, four, five, six, and seven, it was at a hundred percent. Obviously, during the economic downturn, the real estate correction, that number has dropped off. But what we have learned over the period in time in which we've had the Community Preservation Act was that to maximize the impact of this, we needed to partner with organizations, housing organizations, historical organizations, open space organizations, using their funds with our funds to achieve those goals. And the town surcharge has been about thirty-seven percent. When you start to look at the grants the Community Preservation Committee has been able to secure, the financial leverage that we have been able to coordinate with other partners when it came to acquiring different properties, you can see that that leverage in grants is coming in at over forty percent. So you can see, for every dollar the town of Plymouth kicks in as residents, we're getting in excess of a dollar towards housing, historical, and open space. So the impact of the fund is shown on that level. Again, I just want to briefly introduce Paul Withington, the former Chair of the Community Preservation Committee, to make a comment on the Community Preservation Act.
Mr. Withington, Paul Withington, continuing the presentation from the Community Preservation Committee. Mr. Withington, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Paul Withington. I'm not a town meeting member. I have been in the past. And I want to hit a little background that might be interesting to all of you and especially those who are serving for the first time. We talk about the state's contribution to CPC, where they match what the towns vote in. I think you should understand where that money comes from that the state distributors, distributes to towns that have voted in the Community Preservation Act. That money that the state passes out is generated by a surcharge at the Registry of Deeds. That surcharge is across the state of Massachusetts. Every registry of deeds collects that surcharge. That surcharge goes in to a fund that the town distributes to various towns that have accepted the Community Preservation Act. Every town, village, and city contribute in there. Only those that have the Community Preservation Act operating in their town gets any money back from that. If we should remove ourselves from the-
Thirty seconds. You have thirty seconds.
May I have more, sir?
How much more time do you need, Mr. Withington?
A minute more, minute and a half total.
If there are no objections, we'll extend it two minutes.
I'd like to go back to the original time when the town of Plymouth, Plymouth, accepted the CPC. We were a year behind the town of Duxbury. Duxbury had a project that was a little under fifty thousand dollars. That same year, Plymouth was not in the Community Preservation Act concept. We contributed through the Registry of Deeds surcharge over forty-seven thousand dollars. What we did that year was we put forty-seven thousand dollars into the kitty, and forty-nine thousand dollars came out for the Duxbury project. If we get out of this program, we will be back at square one. We will be contributing into that fund, but we will not see any of it. I think that's worth remembering, that the money that comes in to the state, that they distribute back to the towns only who are in that project, comes from the surcharge at the Registry of Deeds. I don't want to go back to that time-
Thirty seconds.
I don't want to go back to the time when we started subsidizing Duxbury's projects and we're getting none. Thank you very much.
Edward Russell. Article thirty-two. Mr. Russell.
Ed Russell, Precinct Twelve. Aspire, the Plymouth Center of the Arts, and other cultural and wonderful things have been done for this town would never happen. It was said last Saturday, I think, that the town can and will in the future do some of these things. That's baloney. It'll never happen. We'll give up the potential for these things in the future. We must keep this act.
John Hammond. We're debating Article thirty-two, Plymouth Town Meeting, coming to you live, Plymouth North High School. Mr. Hammond.
I want to, I want to face you while I talk to you. I find it difficult to talk with my back to people, which seems to be what happens. I'm not going to recite the merits. I think we all know them. We just voted for almost all of what we were trying to, the committee was trying to do this year. And we have pretty consistently. I want to talk about the argument that it's undemocratic of us to not turn this back to the voters. I think we are not elected to what is the legislature of Plymouth to be fools. You could say of anything that we do that it would be more democratic to let the whole town vote on every issue that comes in front of us. We're elected to inform ourselves, learn about what's going on. We should listen to our constituents. I've gotten two messages or phone calls from what sounds a little grandiose, my constituents. They're both in favor. There hasn't been any other reaction. It's not like there's a groundswell of people who are feeling oppressed by this act. If there were, they could vote us out of office, and that would be the democratic thing to do. And if somebody challenged me sufficiently, I would tell them that. Thank you.
Michael Withington. We're debating Article thirty-two, Plymouth Town Meeting, coming to you live from Plymouth North High School. Mr. Withington.
Honorable Selectmen and Chairman, Finance Committee, Town Meeting Members, we are elected officials. We have the responsibility to make the right choices for the town. If we run away from those choices, we might as well just have an open meeting and just vote every single issue along the way. I think it's to be noted that one of the CPC articles did not pass tonight. And if you don't want to be able to make that decision, then vote to have it go to an emotional rent referendum, at which point someone will say, "Do you want to pay more taxes?" And I've asked anyone in this sitting body to say, "Do you want to pay more taxes?" Most people are going to say, "No, I don't." But I'll tell you one thing, that by taking this off the table, the Community Preservation Act, you're taking money out of your pockets, and you're taking history, low-cost housing, and you are taking open space out of your hands. But you're not only doing it for yourself, you're doing it for your children and your grandchildren. I urge you to vote no, to put this to a general referendum. Thank you for your time.
Robert Hollis. We're debating Article thirty-two. This is Plymouth's annual town meeting. We're coming to you live from Plymouth North High School. Mr. Hollis, on the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I am here as a town meeting member, but also as the president of the Greater Plymouth Performing Arts Center. I have the most in-depth knowledge of how we are working as Aspire as a result of the CPC. So I thought I'd give you a little progress report. Friday night, we had a performer into our space that was formerly at the Grand Old Opry down in Nashville, which is the old Ryman Theater before it moved to its current space. She looked at our place and said, "This is better than the Ryman. It sounds better. It's the best room she's performed in in many, many years." Wow, that's pride in our community. We have the same pews. She said we should call ourselves the Little Ryman of the North. Well, how did that come about? Well, the CPC granted us a six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar investment, much like we do when we work, we might have a 401K. We invest money. But with that, we also get a match, much like a 401K. Our match came in the way of state dollars, about twenty-five percent or so that was matched. We've raised as an organization five-hundred-thousand dollars between grants and individual donations and businesses. The community has come together to support that. The work of the town artisans that resulted in much of what we got for free. Volunteers, I can attest that I have spent in the last three to four years at least twenty to thirty hours a week for free working on this project, and there are many others like me as well. So as a result, we have building progress. We're, right now, we're going out to bid for our elevator to make structural improvements that don't allow the building to be, have integrity for another hundred years. But beyond the building that we're preserving, we are building a community there of young people, of artists, as well as people that come to enjoy that would not be available to you otherwise. So in conclusion, I heard a precinct, a market precinct fifteen, if we didn't have the CPC, I wonder what that building would have been. Well, I know what it would have been. It would have been condos, because that's the only other way that, use it for that building that could have been. But with the CPC, we have a building that we can be very proud of, but also is bringing together a community of people unlike anything in this whole area.
Unless I have a procedural motion at this time, I don't have enough time before the recess for another five minutes. So if there's no one who's going to be making a procedural motion, then- Okay. And who's making that motion? Craig Brenner moves to close debate. It's a motion for the previous question. I'll now ask anyone who still cares to be heard to stand and be recognized. Thank you. We'll now have a voice vote as to whether to close debate on Article thirty-two. All those in favor of closing debate, say aye. Opposed, say no. The motion carries by more than two-thirds. We will now have a vote on Article thirty-two. It is a majority vote. We will now take the vote. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. The chair is in doubt. Again, we're moving as to whether to rescind the Acceptance Committee Preservation Act. I will call for one more voice vote, and if I'm still in doubt, we'll do electronically. All those in favor of voting to rescind Community Preservation Act, say aye. Opposed, say no. The motion does not carry. This town meeting is in recess at eight fifty-nine PM for fifteen minutes. I'd like to welcome town meeting members back to our evening session, the second session of Plymouth Town Meeting. In our earlier deliberation, we had a vote on Article sixteen F. And at this time, Options Technologies is going to provide us with a record of the vote on sixteen F. So if you can focus your attention on the screen on the stage, we'll begin to show how the precincts voted on Article sixteen F. Options Technologies, we can proceed at this time. Article sixteen F, you'll see precincts one, two, and three. Red is a no, green is a yes, white is no vote or absent, failure to vote. Eleven abstention, precincts four, five, and six. This is for Article sixteen F, being displayed on the screen for town meeting members. We then continue with precincts seven, eight, and nine. This is again for Article sixteen F. The vote was twenty-nine in favor, sixty-nine in opposition, six abstentions. Precincts ten, eleven, and twelve are being shown for Article sixteen F. And as we continue, precincts thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, and that is the record for Article sixteen F. We now move to Article seventeen. Mr. Moody moves the town vote to transfer the care, custody, and control of Barso zero-five-three-zero-zero-zero-three-two-zero-zero-six number two-one-oh-six State Road and change the purpose for which it is held, from being held by the town treasurer for the purpose of tax title to being held by the Affordable Housing Trust for the purpose of affordable housing. It's a two-thirds vote. Mr. Moody. Mr. Moody is not here, so we will now continue. Does anybody else care to be heard? Either on behalf of the Advisory and Finance Committee? John Moody is the Chair of the Advisory and Finance Committee, and I assume he does want to be heard on Article seventeen. Mr. Moody.
Yes, I do. The Advisory and Finance Committee unanimously recommends town meeting approve Article seventeen. Town meeting approval of this article will transfer the property from the town treasurer, who acquired it through the tax title process, to the Affordable Housing Trust for rehabilitation of the existing structure and marketing it as an affordable home. The home would be deeded affordable in perpetuity and count toward the town's affordable housing inventory.
Further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries by more than two-thirds. Article eighteen has been withdrawn. Article nineteen, Mr. Moody moves the town vote to transfer the care, custody, and control of a parcel number two-two-seven along Pond Road and change the purpose for which it is held, from being held by the town treasurer for the purpose of tax title to being held by the Affordable Housing Trust for the purpose of affordable housing. It's a two-thirds vote. Mr. Moody.
The Advisory and Finance Committee unanimously recommends town meeting approve Article nineteen. Town meeting approval of this article will transfer the property from the town treasurer, who acquired the property through the tax title process, to the Affordable Housing Trust for marketing to builders to demolish the existing uninhabitable structures, clear the lot, and construct at least one housing unit to be deeded affordable in perpetuity and count toward the town's affordable housing inventory.
Further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries by more than two-thirds. Article twenty has been withdrawn. Article twenty-one has been withdrawn. Article twenty-two, Mr. Moody moves the town vote to accept and allow Raymond Road and Camelot Drive as public ways. It's been laid out by the Board of Selectmen, recorded, reported to the town, shown on plans, on file with the town clerk. You have the text, the majority vote. Mr. Moody.
The Advisory and Finance Committee, on a unanimous vote with one abstention, recommends town meeting approve Article twenty-two. Town meeting approval of this article will authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept Raymond Road and Camelot Drive as public ways. Both roads have been evaluated and approved for acceptance by the Roads Advisory Committee.
Further discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Article twenty-three, Mr. Moody moves the town vote to raise and appropriate five-hundred-thousand dollars for improvements to private roads, including all costs necessary related thereto, consistent with provisions of Chapter one-twelve of the Acts of two thousand and twelve, signed by the governor on June thirteenth, two thousand and twelve. It's a majority in a roll call. Mr. Moody.
The Advisory and Finance Committee unanimously recommends town meeting approve Article twenty-three. Town meeting approval of this article will authorize appropriation of five-hundred-thousand dollars for improvement of unaccepted or private roads. This is the fourth consecutive year that Plymouth will provide funding for repair and maintenance of the town's unaccepted roads.
Further discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. I'll call for the vote one more time. It is a roll call, but it's not unanimous. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Article twenty-four, Mr. Moody moves the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw, section two-oh-five-nineteen, signs, as on file with the town clerk, to allow school information display boards for high schools in accordance with the final report and recommendations of the Planning Board voted January fourth, two thousand and sixteen, as found on pages three-oh-five and three-oh-six of the annual town meeting report and recommendations of the Advisory and Finance Committee. It's a two-thirds vote, a roll call, if it's not unanimous. Mr. Moody.
The Advisory and Finance Committee unanimously recommends town meeting approve Article twenty-four. Town meeting approval of this article will extend the zoning bylaw change approved by town meeting in two thousand and thirteen to permit use of the illuminated school information display board at Plymouth North High School to a similar device that will be installed as part of the construction of Plymouth South High School. The board at PSHS will be placed on the entrance access road to the schools approximately six-hundred-and-thirty feet from Long Pond Road to minimize unintentional effects of the illuminated board on homes in the area.
Discussion on Article twenty-four. Hearing none, a call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Article twenty-five. Article twenty-five has been withdrawn. Article twenty-six, Mr. Moody moves the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw, section twenty-five dash twenty-seven, special permit uses. It's on file with the town clerk, to allow by right public safety buildings and uses in all districts, as well as amend associated definitions, procedures, and schedules in accordance with the final report and recommendation of the Planning Board voted January twenty-fifth, two thousand and sixteen, as found on pages three-eleven and three-twelve of the annual town meeting report and recommendations of the Advisory and Finance Committee. Mr. Moody.
Do you have a motion to amend, Mr. Moderator?
I do. I'll take your comments first, unless you'd like to wait.
The Advisory and Finance Committee unanimously recommends town meeting approve Article twenty-six. Town meeting approval of this article will amend Plymouth zoning bylaw two-zero-five-dash-two-seven, pertaining to special permit uses to exempt public safety buildings and uses from the special permit provisions, allowing such buildings and uses by right in all zones and districts of the town. Public safety buildings are a critical part of the town's infrastructure, providing essential services to the surrounding neighborhoods. Projects to site such buildings would continue to engage abutters and neighborhoods in the process to ensure local concerns are addressed as part of the project. Exempting the projects from the special permit provisions is intended to streamline the process and reduce the risk that a single resident could significantly delay public safety improvements intended to ensure the safety of the broader community.
The main motion is a two-thirds vote, a roll call if it's not unanimous. Ann Peiser, Precinct Three, moves to amend Article twenty-six by replacing all districts with the North Plymouth Service Area. It's a majority vote on the motion to amend, Ann Peiser. Do you care to be heard on your motion to amend? We are debating Article twenty-six of the annual town meeting. Welcome.
Ann Peiser, Precinct Three. I introduced this motion to amend because I felt that Article twenty-six was too broad. I fully support the need for a replacement fire station in North Plymouth with the flexibility this article provides for such a high-density area. However, we need to be careful about the sighting of fire stations in neighborhoods. I have no problem housing the excellent men and women who provide us with protection. The fire trucks, however, are noisy. They proceed not only to fire emergencies, but to medical ones as well, and would disrupt the integrity of residential neighborhoods. Therefore, while Plymouth needs to act- Therefore, while Plymouth needs to act with dispatch to provide fire protection to North Plymouth, it needs to examine future sighting of stations with as many safeguards as possible. Please accept this amendment to restrict the application of this zoning change just to North Plymouth. Thank you.
John Moody on the motion to amend.
The Advisory and Finance Committee stands by its recommendation and opposes the motion to amend. The motion to amend would create a bylaw provision for a single case rather than a broad principle that supports the town's public safety infrastructure needs as Plymouth continues to grow in the years to come.
Further discussion on the motion to amend? Yes, on the motion to amend to, by Ann Peiser, please come forward. Ellen Costello.
Ellen Costello, Precinct 10. Just quickly, someone describe to me the North Plymouth Service Area. Is that an overlay district that has just been created?
Someone like to respond to Mr. Costello. Lee Hartman is Director of Planning and Development, respond to Ellen Costello.
Thank you. Also, if I have the chance to speak on the motion.
You do, Mr. Hartman. You have the floor. Grab it.
So the Steering Committee, uh, Steering Committee, the North Plymouth Steering Center goes from the town line to approximately Knapp Terrace, over to Route 3. So we're talking about Knapp Terrace to the ocean, to the Kingston Town Line, to Route 3. So...
So that's now deemed the North Plymouth Service Area?
Yes.
And how long has it been called that?
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two.
Or eighty, 1980, let's say.
Okay. All right, very good. Thank you.
Kevin Lynch. Mr. Hartman, you still have more to say.
Okay, so now that you've pulled me up here, just a few statements to make, that generally the special permit process that we have for the town of Plymouth says that the use is generally okay, but there might be certain cases where the town, through the Zoning Board of Appeals, may want to deny a request of the town. The special permit process is a good process when you're dealing with the private sector. In the public sector, it will add thousands of dollars to a project. Each review that we have has to go to the Planning Board, to Steering Committees, to the Design Review Board, and to the Zoning Board. At each one of those cases, we will have to hire engineers, architects, landscape architects, and probably attorneys to represent the town as we go through that process. The approval of a site and the funding of a site is done by town meeting, a two-thirds vote of town meeting. So this body has to say the site is okay, the use is okay for that particular site. If you don't vote that, then the project doesn't proceed. So this special permit adds just one more layer to the process. Also, that if you get to the point where you, as town meeting, appropriate the funds, pick the site, and then we go through the process, and for some reason, although I think it's unlikely, but for some reason the site is denied, you will have spent tens of thousands of dollars in design and land acquisition costs on a site that you can't use. And if, in the case, and again, I think it's unlikely, if it's denied, then the town, through the building committee, will be hiring an attorney, and the town, through the zoning board, will be hiring an attorney. We will be paying for that, and then the town will be suing the town in court. It could be crazy, and again, we go back to the point that it still takes a two-thirds vote of this body to say that the site is acceptable. And again, I do agree that it's unlikely, but with that two-thirds vote of this town meeting, why add the risk and the extra cost to the process if you get to decide where an acceptable location for a fire station is? So please, don't support this amendment. I think it's great for us to allow public safety in the entire town, and I think you have the control of the sites when the process comes through you for the approval. Thank you.
Kevin Lynch.
I would be cautious about this because you potentially could have these unintended consequences where it's like, oops, we shouldn't have done that. And I support the amendment. Let's restrict it, just to that particular spot. Mr. Hartman's talking about spending thousands of dollars. Well, we're spending millions of dollars, and we don't blink. So think about that, and my, again, my big concern is, is that, you know, this could open things up that we really don't want to have occur. And thank you.
Article 26, further discussion. Michael Main, we're debating Article 26 of the annual town meeting, coming to you live from Plymouth North High School. Mr. Main.
I'm Buster Main from Precinct 8, and I'm also a zoning board member. And I am not going to support the amendment, but will support the main motion, and I'll tell you a little about why. When anybody has to do something, that a piece of property has to come to the zoning board, we go through a pretty extensive look at the whole project, and it can be for as little as a few inches on a setback to as much as the height of a building, or many other things. What this bylaw will do is it will allow by right, it will allow the town, and you heard Mr. Hartman say that before we could ever put a building anywhere, we would have to be right back here to this body to talk about that. But if we stayed with a special permit use for a public safety building, what would happen is, is we would go out again, this body, and somebody would find a piece of property, they'd come to us, we would vote on it, and then we would have to apply for a special permit. It would go through, as Mr. Hartman said, the Steering Committees, the Planning Board, it would go through everybody. And at the end, and now here's how it goes. At the end, they're going to come to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and they're going to come with an engineer, an architect, God only knows how many, certainly an attorney, and each one of these people have been to all of these other meetings, and the clock is ticking, and that's us. We're paying this bill, okay? We've already found the piece of property, we already think it's a real good deal, but no, we're going to have to put the town through this rigmarole again for public safety. They're not asking to put a recreation center, they're not asking to put anything out of the ordinary. They're asking for something that is extremely important to our safety and well-being. So now we get to the zoning board, and one person, we make a decision, and we, and by the way, they're not asking to supersede any building laws or anything. They still have to go with all of our normal building laws. So when they get to us, and we listen to this presentation, and then we decide one way or another, if we decide, yes, go right ahead and do it, and one person, one person in that neighborhood decides that they don't like it for one reason or another, they can appeal that decision. And here's where it gets tricky. A fast-track land court appeal, and we have had many of them, and I have sat on many of the cases, and I've got them in, over my desk at home piled up. There's 620 days is a fast-track land court deal. And at 90 days, you have to do this filing, and then 180 days, you have to do this deposition, and it goes on and on and on. And while that's all going on, one, the building cost that was figured when the town originally sat down and said, we're going to build this thing, two years, we're talking over two years in litigation. And in that two-year period, you're talking about all the money for the litigation, but more so the expense of the construction. I am in construction, I'm retired, but I, my livelihood was building, and building costs escalate tremendously. So now, all right, we get the land court thing all done, 620 days are so down the road, the court says, well, remand it back to the zoning board, and yes, you can build this, and so on and so forth. Now we go ahead and start to want to build, and the person that we tried to tie the land up for, in the first place to purchase that land, has said, I can't wait 620 days. I want to sell this property now.
Thirty seconds.
If you don't want it, then somebody else will. So it's a, it's a pretty steep step to take, to just say, no, we don't want to do this. I understand people's rights, and I always am trying to enforce and protect those people's rights. But this time, we need to protect the town. This is a good thing, and I'm going to vote in favor of it.
Richard Surkey.
I also am against the amendment and in favor of the main motion. And if I can just pick up where Mr. Main left off, it only takes one person to appeal a decision by the zoning board, and you can go to the land court or the superior court. And after all, the pretrial discovery takes place, there's a judge who hears the entire case again, it goes before a judge, not a jury, and the judge has to make his or her decision based on whether the zoning board's decision was right or wrong. And any person disappointed by the judge's decision has an automatic right of appeal to the appeals court. And once the appeals court has ruled, there's a discretionary right of review in the Supreme Judicial Court. And all that time, as you've heard, the clock is ticking, the expenses mount, and the emergency needs of the public go unmet. So I urge you to vote against the amendment and in favor of the main motion.
Further discussion, Mr. Landers.
I'd like to move the question.
Motion to close debate will be on the motion to amend. This is on Ann Peiser's motion to amend by replacing all districts with the North Plymouth Service Area. We will now take a vote on whether or not to amend the main motion. I'll call for a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Point of order?
What is the point of order?
I think that the motion was to end debate.
That is correct. It was to end debate. We'll now take a motion of whether to close debate. It is not debatable. Anyone else care to be heard? Please stand. Yes, thank you. We'll now take a vote on whether to close debate. It'll be a voice vote, it's a two-thirds vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no.
No.
Motion carries. We have now closed debate. We will now take a vote on Ann Peiser's motion to amend. It's a majority vote. I will start with a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no.
No.
Motion does not carry. We are now continuing with further deliberation on the main motion. Mr. Landers, do you have another motion to make?
I'd like to move the question.
Mr. Landers?
Yes, I'd like to move the question.
You'd like to close debate?
Yes.
Who else would like to be heard before we take a vote? Please stand. Thank you. At this time, we'll now take a voice vote on whether to close debate on the main motion. I'll now call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no.
No.
The motion carries by more than two-thirds. We therefore have closed debate on Article 26. We will now take a vote. It is a two-thirds vote. It is a roll call if it's not unanimous. We will first take a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no.
No.
Motion does not carry, motion carries. We will take a roll call vote, it is not unanimous. And we'll watch, get ready for your handsets. To be voting on Article 26, you'll have 20 seconds in which to vote. You can vote now. The light is on. We'll continue. We'll take the vote on Article 26. You'll see we have approximately 11 seconds, 135 town meeting members. Town meeting members are voting at this time, and we've completed the vote, and we have 98 town meeting members voting. We still have a quorum, and the total, 82 having voted in favor, 16 in opposition, zero abstentions. It carries. We'll now watch as to how people vote individually, beginning with precincts one, two, and three. Green is yes, the red is no, the white is no vote, failure to vote, absent. Precincts four, five, and six are now being shown on the screen. This is for Article 26 of the annual town meeting warrant, precincts seven, eight, and nine. As we continue with town meeting members, you'll see 98 are currently voting, we have a quorum of 90. Precincts 10, 11, and 12. Quorum will be presumed unless challenged. And we continue with precincts 13, 14, and 15, and that completes Article 26. Yes, Mr. Vaz?
Yes. My vote was not recorded.
It was not recorded. And what is your vote, Mr. Vaz?
I voted yes.
Mr. Vaz votes yes, and that increases the yeses by one. Could you please check with Options Technologies to make sure that your handsets are still working? Article 27, I have no motion. Hearing no motion, I declare no action. And we'll proceed in the warrant with Article 28, which has been withdrawn. Article 29. Mr. Moody moves the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the General Court of the Commonwealth to enact legislation pursuant to general laws 43B, Section 10, to amend the town charter, Chapter 3, Section 8.2, regarding the establishment and scope of the Department of Finance in Chapter 3, Section 9-4, regarding the director of finance, as provided on pages 317, 318 of the annual town meeting report and recommendations of the Advisory and Finance Committee. It's a majority vote. Mr. Moody.
The Advisory and Finance Committee unanimously recommends town meeting approve Article 29. Town meeting approval of this article will authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the state legislature for amendments to the town charter that are required due to a Board of Selectmen-approved reorganization of procurement from the Department of Finance to the office of the town manager.
Further discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no.
No.
The motion carries. It is a majority. Article 30. Mr. Moody moves the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to grant perpetual non-exclusive utility easement to N-Star Electric Company and Verizon New England, Inc., over a portion of town-owned property located at 248 Old Sandwich Road. You have the text, it's a majority vote. Mr. Moody.
The Advisory and Finance Committee unanimously recommends town meeting approve Article 30. Town meeting approval of this article will authorize the Board of Selectmen to grant perpetual non-exclusive easements to N-Star and Verizon New England on property located at 248 Old Sandwich Road. The easements are required to permit the construction and installation of electricity and communications connections and services for the new municipal emergency communications tower.
Further discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries. Article 31. Mr. Moody moves the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to grant perpetual non-exclusive utility easement to N-Star Electric Company and Verizon New England, Inc., over a portion of town-owned property located at 490 Long Pond Road. You have the text, it's a majority. Mr. Moody.
The Advisory and Finance Committee unanimously recommends town meeting approve Article 31. Town meeting approval of this article will authorize the Board of Selectmen to grant perpetual non-exclusive easements to N-Star and Verizon New England on property located at 490 Long Pond Road. The easements are required to permit the construction and installation of electricity and communications connections and services for the new Plymouth South High School.
Further discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no.
No.
Motion carries. At this time, just like to take a moment to thank Brian Alosi, Assistant Town Moderator. Also, I'd like to take an opportunity to thank Carrie Gillette, Secretary of the Advisory and Finance Committee, Lawrence Peiser, the town clerk, certainly all the town officials, boards, and committees that helped to make this town meeting, and also town meeting members. And before I go to the next article, was there a point of order back in the room? Mr. Vandini?
Point of order.
Can you come to a microphone, Mr. Vandini? Can you come to a microphone? Can you come to the microphone, Mr. Vandini, so that people at home can hear you? Come to the microphone. Is this a point of order, Mr. Vandini? Charles Vandini, Precinct 1, on a point of order?
All I'm saying is, there's no more N-Star, it's Eversource.
Correct.
Pardon?
Correct.
So is it going to affect the article at all?
No.
Okay, so should we change the article from N-Star to?
Actually, I left out the parenthetical reference in my comments to Eversource. It's N-Star slash Eversource.
Thank you. And we'll now move to Article 33. I have no motion. Hearing no motion, I declare no action. Article 34, I have no motion. Hearing no motion, I declare no action. Article 35, I have no motion. Hearing no motion, I declare no action. Article 36, I have no motion. Hearing no motion, I declare no action. Mr. Moody moves to dissolve the annual town meeting discussion. Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries. The annual town meeting is dissolved at 9:43 PM. Thank you.
9:43.
9:43.